Whoa, somebody's got my volume way up here, like really far up. Anyways, all right, welcome everybody to the regular city council meeting for September the 2nd. I'll now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Pratton.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone can please stand and join us for a silent prayer followed by a flag salute.
Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Seriously, the mic is like way, like I can hear myself reverberating out here. I don't know.
I'll text them in the back.
Yeah, thank you. Can we have our replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Saturday, September 6th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, September 7th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrol cable 14.
All right, thank you. That's better. All right, moving on to item B, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. We do have an item, presentation number C1. We have actually going to pull that from the agenda due to someone who's not able to make it for that presentation, so we will move on with the other two. First one's going to be the C2, Commission on Aging Annual Report for fiscal year 2425.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Go ahead. It's okay. I'd like to call up our chairperson, Joan Wolburn.
Are you here?
Perfect.
Okay, I have a large voice. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Joan Wolburn, and I'm the current Chair of the Commission on Aging for the City of Galt. What I have to present to you tonight is a summary of what we've done in the past year. We got off to a slow start because there are three new council members or three new commission members, and we couldn't be seated because of the problems with the election, the tie in the vote, so we didn't really get started until mid-year in terms of having a chair and all. Anyhow, we started off the year following up with programs that were already in place. And the first one was the trips to the casinos, and we made two trips to Red Hawk, and we were planning on another one at the request of some of our seniors, and unfortunately, we weren't able to do it because of the cost. The casinos have all stopped their buses, and so we have no free transportation to the casinos, and the buses to rent run anywhere from $300 to $500 for a medium-sized bus. So you will hear this throughout my presentation, the cost of living, as we all know, are going up, and so is the cost of running programs. We did go on to sponsor a resource fair. We co-sponsored it with The Chamber, and we had a very good turnout. We had 30 vendors, and we had seven presenters who did workshops. Unfortunately, we didn't have as much of a turnout from the community as we would have liked, and this again goes back to it takes a community to help pull these programs off. It takes help to get the seniors there. Many of them would like to go, but they can't because of transportation problems. The next thing we did are bingo games, which we're well-known for. The attendance is going up. We are now averaging about 87 every Monday, and so we're beginning to really fill up Chabola Hall, and we're finding that quite a few of the people who come in for breakfast or lunch at the café run by Meals on Wheels are now staying over to play bingo. So it's just growing exponentially, and we're not sure where this is going to go because it's costly. We have to provide the prizes, and when you have that many people, sometimes we'll have five winners of a game, so that's, it wipes out our supply of prizes. So we're looking for, working with other groups like LeChaim and some of the antique stores around town who are helping us out on prizes. We did make one new change in the rule with that, and that's for safety's sake, as you all probably know, I'm a nurse. I was concerned about people bringing in food products for dark prizes. We didn't know where they got them, we didn't know how they were stored, you know, no one could vow for them. So we have made a standing that we will not take food products to put on the table for the prizes. The only food products we are accepting is from the food pantry, and when they are finished with their day, they oftentimes have food left over, particularly produce, and we had 20-some loaves of fresh baked bread one day, and we will take those because we know the pathway and just who has touched them and who hasn't. So bingo goes on, and it's growing. We are also looking at, I started a new bookkeeping for our members where we're now keeping track of what we spend on prizes. We have one person who spends on the average of $300 every couple of months bringing in prizes. So in order for us to give you a good estimation of what it's costing to run this program, we're starting a little bit more involved bookkeeping system so that we know exactly where we're spending our money. We were happy that we were able to provide $1,000 to the senior exercise class, which is a chair class, and they require special classes, and we were able to buy some chairs for them. Their class is growing as well, and they were running out of chairs that have handles on them. We had, we're starting to look at providing workshops. We had a group from Berkeley come up and talk to seniors about the scams that are going on in terms of, you know, wills and the banks are seeing a lot of scams, and I know we have a podcast coming up this week on scams that are involving seniors. So we're starting to look at more educational programs. We have Thursday set up as education, and that was where we had our speaker come. It too has a low turnout, but I think with perseverance and with the city behind us, we can build the attendance on those things. We also started a new program called a Walk in the Park, and the first walk, there were four people, myself included, and we actually walked a mile, but it was a leisurely stroll, lots of conversation, and interestingly, the next week, we did it at the same park. We were at the city park over on Corillian, and the second week, the word went out that it was kind of a fun thing to do, and we weren't running a race, and it was just a leisurely walk. So that walk day, we had 11 participants and two dogs, and it was, it was a very nice event. So now this last one, we did last week, we had eight people walk, and we did it at Walker Park. Our plan is to move around the city to not only introduce, some of the people had never been to Walker Park, they were shocked to see that there was a soccer field and stands there, and they said, "I never, I've never been over here." They live on the other side of 99. It's not like it's a two-day trip, but they, you know, they liked it, and they'll be back, they said. So that is looking hopeful. That's, that's a new program. The other new program that we're looking at, and we've talked to Jackie at great length about it, is that some of the seniors are telling us they'd love to have a garage sale. They're downsizing, and we said, "Well, you know, how can we help?" Well, what we came up with is instead of doing an actual lawn sale, we will sponsor a booth each week at the Galt Flea Market. We will sponsor it, but it'll be a lottery system where people can enter their name, and we'll choose somebody each week who can do their garage sale, but we'll, we'll pay for it, we'll sponsor it, and we're hoping that this will help, you know, again, some of them bring the community together. All of the things we're working on are really to bring people together so that we become less of a, you know, in the front of driving it, we want to be in the back looking at these things take off, and so that's, that's what we're, we're doing. And again, we're trying to expand Thursday, so if any of you know of speakers who have topics that are critical or of interest to seniors, we'd like to book them in. I have several groups from Sacramento that are interested in coming down. They represent food programs. We do have a hunger problem in Galt, even though it's behind closed doors. It's, it's, it exists, and we're beginning to find out. The program that I've started to help us find these things out is talk with a commissioner, and so two times a month, on Mondays just preceding bingo, we will have a session where one of the commissioners, and I'm the one that's doing it right now, will have a private one-on-one session, and it's with the understanding that it is confidential, and we don't have the authority to lead the charge, but we are your eyes and ears into the community, and we're trying to find ways that we can get the information to you all without exposing some of the seniors. Some of them who've come before you before have been threatened with eviction. They've had a lot of retribution, and this doesn't come out in the public. These are people who, like myself, have pride and don't always want everybody to know what's going on. So I've had two people come in. One lady sat for an hour and cried. We can give them resources into the community, we can certainly make referrals to the police, we can talk, you know, to that, so we're not solving their problems, but we're simply helping them to find a pathway to hopefully solutions. We have about 15% of our population in Galt are seniors. That's a lot of seniors, and a lot of them are living in homes where they're renting a room. I had one lady come in and tell me, I asked her, I said, "Do you have a place to stay?" And she said, "Yes, she pays a woman rent so she can sleep in her garage because it's warm and safe in there." So we're finding these things out, and you'll hear more about these things. I told you about the booth, and we have one other large event coming up, and that will be the Disaster Fair, which we've been working on for almost at least six months and changed the date a lot, and we've decided, Jackie and I have talked, and we are going to do it as part of one of the Saturday fairs that they're focusing on danger, and so we'll make one large fair out of that as a disaster fair. And that pretty much sums up what we're doing and where we're going. I guess I could answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Joan, for your very, very, now my microphone seems so, it's too low now. Thank you for your very thorough presentation, as usual. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Wolburn before she gets her seat? Okay. Thank you, Joan, we appreciate it, and we appreciate what the commission's doing. I know it's, we know there's a need to do more, so let's just say that, so please keep up your work. Our second presentation this evening is going to be C3, Planning Commission Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2425.
Here, I was going to come up here and tell you how busy we were, but that Commission on Aging makes us look, look bad, but I will, personally, I want to say that I think the Commission on Aging is probably your most important commission this city has, and so they're doing a great job, and keep up the good work. So Mayor Farmer, just getting your members of the council and the hard-working staff and directors that are here. It is my honor as the Chair of the Planning Commission on behalf of Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Gerling, and Commissioner Jones to present to you the 2024-2025 Annual Report of the Planning Commission of the City of Galt. This report outlines the commission's activities throughout the fiscal year. The majority of the council, Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Sandu, Councilmember Pratton, you've all served on the Planning Commission at one time or another, and I believe Mayor Farmer and then Councilmember Reed are familiar with the planning very well, so you have an idea of what we do and what our responsibilities are. As you know, the Planning Commission plays a vital part in ensuring the continued growth and success of the City of Galt by taking action upon a variety of development applications and guaranteeing that the integrity of the city's general plan is maintained and the city ordinances are complied with, and I think that's kind of an important statement there because the general plan is really what drives a lot of what we do. A lot of times, people think that the Planning Commission are the ones with all the power and all the decision-making, but a lot of it is referring back to the general plan and referring back to the city's ordinances and making sure that those are followed. The past year's been a busy one for the Planning Commission, and we are looking forward to an even more productive 2025-2026. The Commission will continue to administer the functions delegated to us and serve the City of Galt in the best manner possible.
So Mayor Farmer, just getting your members of the council and the hardworking staff and directors that are here. It is my honor as the Chair of the Planning Commission on behalf of Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Gerling, and Commissioner Jones to present to you the 2024-2025 Annual Report of the Planning Commission of the City of Galt. This report outlines the commission's activities throughout the fiscal year. The majority of the council, Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Sandu, Councilmember Pratt, and you've all served on the planning commission at one time or another. And I believe Mayor Farmer and then Councilmember Reed are familiar with the planning very well. So you have an idea of what we do and what our responsibilities are. As you know, the planning commission plays a vital part in ensuring the continued growth and success of the City of Galt by taking action upon a variety of development applications and guaranteeing that the integrity of the city's general plan is maintained and the city ordinances are complied with. And I think that's kind of an important statement there because the general plan is really what drives a lot of what we do. A lot of times people think that the planning commissioner are the ones with all the power and all the decision-making, but a lot of it is referring back to the general plan and referring back to the city's ordinances and making sure that those are followed. The past year has been a busy one for the planning commission, and we are looking forward to an even more productive 2025-2026. The commission will continue to administer the functions delegated to us and serve the City of Galt in the best manner possible. The commissioner, the commission could not do it alone. And so we would like to thank the city council, the city manager, the city attorney, and the planning division for their efforts and support over the past year. Over the past year, we worked closely with, I believe it's Assistant City Manager now, Ms. Mendez. And so she's helped us guide throughout this last year. Our report has been submitted to you in writing. You have it in your packets. I won't go over everything that we've done over the course of the last year. But as you're aware, we have been quite busy. We've got a lot of developments that have come through. We've approved a lot of their architectural plans. We've had a few changes here and there. But, you know, for the most part, you guys know when we don't approve something because they will come to you guys eventually. So with that, I will submit the plan as written or the, the report as written and ask if anyone has any questions. Don't ask any hard ones because I probably can't answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Deneir. Do any council have a question for Mr. Deneir about the?
Mr. Mayor, no question, but I thank you for all the planning commissioners. They're doing really hard work. Before I elected as a city council, I was a sixth year on planning commission. You know, the planning commission staff, usually when the meeting comes out, maybe 200, 300, 400 pages. But there's a lot of time to read it. If you don't read it, then you don't really find out what you can have a question with the staff. But I really thank you for, you know, planning commissioner, they are a vital part of the guidance to the council. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, we have a, we actually have a really, really good, really strong planning commission right now. And the knowledge that the other commissioners bring to it with their own personal experience is pretty impressive right now. So I'm pretty, pretty, I think you'd all be very happy with who we have right now.
Yeah, I would, I would totally agree with that. I think we got a great planning commission and I, I think it's important. Because a lot of people don't know what the planning commission does. And, and I've always said that, you know, growth is one of the most contentious subjects in Galt because everybody loves small town Galt, but we need growth to be able to survive. And so it's this give-take thing. And, and you guys are, you guys are, you know, in the trenches on that stuff, for lack of a better word. And, you know, a lot of that stuff doesn't come to city council, it comes to the planning commission. And so it's your guys' job to interpret the general plan, as you mentioned, and interpret the municipal codes and guidelines as they read the best you can. And, and, you know, sometimes things go smoothly, sometimes they're a little rocky. But that just shows you're doing your job. I, I do appreciate personally that you guys don't just rubber stamp stuff because if that's the way it was, then I would be looking to replace all of y'all. So I think you did.
I'll keep that in mind.
So I just want to say thank you to all, to you and your, your peers that are not here tonight or are, to keep up the good work. And yeah, it's been a busy year. So thank you, Mr. Deneir.
Again, we can't do it without the staff. So give them a lot of the credit. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, well, with that said, we will go on to, do we take public comment for the presentations or no? No? Okay. Just checking, I can remember. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to item D, which is public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city's council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
Do you have any speakers?
It's been a while since the last time I talked to you all, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, staff, Mr. Chief Justice. Good evening, y'all. I'm taking the mic this evening to introduce you to a newly created, private charitable, tax-exempt 501(c)(3) organization sanctioned by the IRS, the FSB, and licensed by the City of Galt. The name of this organization is Helping Hand Association. I am HHA's Vice President. HHA stands for Helping Hand Association. Our mission is to advocate for the elderly, veterans of any age, and others in need in the City of Galt and its immediate environs, and to support organizations and governmental entities at all levels of government who share in our mission. Our present focus is on the seniors residing in the senior low-income apartment complexes in the city. One way to advocate to you, the city council, for the seniors in our, in our city is to provide suggestions, not just complaints, and/or proposals regarding solutions to a particular problem or concern. Currently, you may be discussing the problem of code violations, alleged code violations in one or more of the senior apartment complexes and how to address them. HHA has put together a proposed ordinance that addresses these concerns. I let you know I am not an attorney. I don't claim to be. And so these are our opinions and our, our offer of help to the city council. So HHA has put together this proposed ordinance that addresses these concerns. My friend and president of the HHA, Paul Salinas, will speak to you to this issue separately. You were furnished a copy of the proposed ordinance with a cover letter and an article that was published back in 2023 that addresses many of these issues and how the Commission on Aging at that time has brought these problems of one apartment complex or more to your attention time and again. As the then-chair of the Commission on Aging, I was deeply involved in working with the city, including the council and other governmental entities and levels of government about this subject. I urge you to peruse the package, come up with your own version of this proposed ordinance if you wish, and resolve to listen to seniors in these complexes, which you have the power to grant business licenses to, the owners, to do business in our city and if necessary, hold the owners meaningfully responsible if necessary, and do all you can and must, including considering possibly revoking the business license of violators and owners if you are able to, to ensure the safety, dignity, and respect of this vulnerable part of our city residents. We all know the owners of these apartments own the real estate and the rentals, but they do not own the seniors that rent them. Thank you, and I wish you a peaceful good night.
Thank you, Mr. Belay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Salinas, and I am the president of Helping Hand Association of Galt. Again, a nonprofit 501(c)(3). I'm gonna go off a little off of my script here because we should recognize some of the things that Joan brought up. These are serious, serious issues. I have volunteered, and one of the reasons Helping Hand was created was I have sat for two hours a week at the commission's office. And I have listened to these individuals come in. And there is some real issues in this community. My friend and fellow veteran, Bob Belay, has identified an issue that has confronted the City of Galt for a number of years. Allegations of, of lack of apartment maintenance repairs and senior abuse. As an advocate for seniors, veterans, and those in need, it is HHA's understanding, rightly or wrongly, that senior tenants of an apartment complex are being intimidated from complaining about facility repairs and issues regarding alleged abuses in fear of eviction. You can understand the fear of those with limited incomes and in the market of high rent. As I noticed in the agenda, there is a program proposed to help those that, for staff. And it's fully understood, especially if you want to keep quality people. This proposed, my friend Bob mentioned a proposed ordinance or code. This proposed code is a solution, maybe not the solution, but a solution to a ten-year problem. HHA is here today not to complain, but to provide a solution to be a partner with you in seeking the solution. It should be noted, as Bob said, we are not lawyers or experts in writing city codes. However, in reviewing documents from the cities like the City of Los Angeles, City of Berkeley, City of San Monica, City of Stockton, there appeared a pattern of thought that is primarily reflected in this proposed code. Some highlights of the proposed code are as follows. It's limited to 50 or more unit apartment complexes. Has annual unit inspections. Has a triad-gastot approach in the inspections. The triad would include public works focusing on facility code compliance, the fire department focusing on fire safety and compliance, and the police slash public service officer focusing on safety, physically, mentally, and harassment-free environment. Why the police? Because seniors are not threatening, threatening by police officers. As seniors, they have tremendous respect for law enforcement. The participation of a police officer will, will be similar to the Galt Police Department's Mobile Crisis Team, except that instead of focusing on the homeless, this triad team member will focus on seniors. Another element is providing a hearing officer. And this proposal is self-funded. However, we do believe there are other funding options that may be available in crime prevention to avoid having the tenants absorb the owner's cost of the self-funding. We're not seeking rent control or creating barriers to owners' right to a free market environment, but to allow the freedom of expression from intimidation and for seniors and in fact, for any human being regardless of their age, color, religious affiliation, and et cetera. What HHA seeks is a place that is safe, meets billing code standards, a healthy, safe, and crime-free environment. One that preserves and enhances the quality of life for residents of the city living in apartment rental complexes.
Mr. Salinas?
I'm trying to keep it short.
Yeah, take about 20 more seconds and wrap up, please. Thank you.
Actually, this concludes my presentation to the council. Now, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Good evening, council members. I'm not here to talk about repercussions on the seniors because, like they said, I'm scared of retaliation. I wanted to know, is there still a plan for the electric sign on C Street? And was it in the same budget of the improvements that were recently done? I'd like to see the bicycle licensing law extended at the police department, especially for the electric bikes. My bike is licensed. They should have a visible license plate for identification purposes when they run seniors down and aid to recover ones that get stolen. They should have liability insurance being that they go 25 miles per hour. It should be a requirement because they can do a lot of damage to people as well as property damage. I'd like to see a minimum wage required because right now the kids on the bikes running, driving around us, you know, going in and out while we're walking. So, you know, they think it's funny and they, none of them should be riding on the sidewalks. I like to bring up, too many bikes are cruising at 2:00 to 5:00 a.m. in the morning. They go around and around the neighborhood, block by block. Is there such a thing as a curfew? It seems that many minors are out of these hours too, between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. They could be up to no good. I like to acknowledge the flea market parking of big box trucks is better. The box looks much better now that they're not taking up the spaces all day long. And it's allowing new clientele now visiting the market because of the easy, available parking spaces now. Because when the vendors were there, you know, they take up about 70 spaces and that's like 400 spaces a day because it doesn't turn over. They still are parking smaller vans there all day long, but no, you took care of half of it. So that's okay. Just need to take care of the other half. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
No more public comments on this item.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item E, reports by city council members of regional boards, commissions, and committees. Start with Mr. Pratt.
All right, I went to my Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District meeting. It's held on the fourth Thursday at the Board of Supervisor Chambers in Sacramento. This was on the 28th, Thursday, the 28th. Just three items on, on this month's agenda. Wasn't too much. Discussion on some of the budget issues. Nothing else too exciting if anybody's interested. Of course, this is all public information, but if anybody looks into it and has any questions and, and would like to discuss it, I'm always open to have that conversation. And that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Sandu. All right, thank you. Councilman Reed.
I didn't attend any of the regular meetings that I do, but however, I did get the chance to attend our parade route meeting that was held by Mr. Solis and attended by one other family, which was, it was nice because they had a lot of questions. They were actually doing reports, the two children that were there. And they asked me and the director several questions about the parade and about a lot of other things. We were able to help them move forward with their report, but it kinda, it saddened me to see that no one else actually showed up. And that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Yeah, and I agree. It is very disappointing when staff, we go out of our way to solicit public information on something that we feel is an important topic, and then we get very low attendance. I myself didn't have any official meetings, but I did want to mention my meeting with Congressman Matt Suie, who came into town last week. Congresswoman was here with her staff and met with myself and Councilwoman Rodriguez, Mr. Solis, Assistant City Manager Mendez, City Manager Arias for a portion of the time as well. We actually met at, at Walker Park and we kind of briefed her on the plan to, with the next phase of the project, which is, for those of you who don't know, she was able to secure a large amount of funding, federal funding for the City of Galt, which we're very grateful for. And it's gonna be monumental in getting the next phase of Walker Park completed. So we were able to go out there. It was a really nice meeting. We, there was a couple of young soccer players out there on the field and we asked one of them to come over and we kind of spoke to them briefly and asked them, you know, what the field means to them. And, and they didn't know we were gonna be there. It was totally unscripted. So it was good. And we, they spoke with the congresswoman and she asked questions. And so it kind of gave her a snapshot of, you know, the importance of having that. And so it kind of gave her a snapshot of, you know, the importance of having that park, you know, completed. And we had a discussion about parks recreation, and it was good. Then we traveled over to the market, and we walked the market. And that was really good. We walked along and her staff, and our staff, we were kind of in a group, and her and I spoke for a little while and talked about the history of the market and talked about, you know, Mr. Salis filled her in on details, how many vendors and Jackie. Jackie was there, too, right? Yes. And she filled him in on how many vendors we had. And it was really good. I think she was really shocked at how big. And to be honest with you, I was actually shocked because I don't go that often to the market. I work during the day, so I don't get to go. And it was, it was really busy that day. And we were on the produce aisle, and just a lot of people there. And just, it's just really kind of this whole mecca of commerce in that one aisle. It's crazy. And bought some produce, and she talked with some of the vendors, and we introduced her to some of the vendors. And overall, it was a really good conversation. I, I think, you know, she really kind of understood the importance of the market and what that means to Galt. And so, and, you know, what it means to a small town like Galt. And so, we just appreciate her visit. We appreciate the funding she actually secured, of course. And we appreciate, you know, the staff and making that whole meeting possible. So I just wanted to share a little bit about that. And with that, that's all I have. So we'll move on to item F, which is the Information Consent Calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 3 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. These three items are: number one, to receive and file a warrant for a period ending August 21st, 2025; item two is the minutes of the regular meeting from August 19th of 2025; and item three is a Treasury report for a period ending July 2025. Do I have any public comment regarding the consent calendar?
No public comment.
Okay. Does anybody like to poll any items or any questions about consent from council? No? All right, we'll be looking for a motion to approve these three items.
I'll move to approve.
Move by Councilmember Pratton, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved 4-0. Moving on to item G, Scheduled Matters Notice of Public Hearing. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Moving on to the regular calendar. First item is, only item under that is the Human Resource Department. Subject is Proposal of a Home Buying Assistance Program. Ms. Koby.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Presented before you tonight is the City of Galt Home Buying Assistance Program. The purpose of this program, it encompasses the City Council's strategic initiative for a unique employee retention program, supports employees in achieving homeownership in Galt, strengthens workforce stability, enhances recruitment and retention efforts, promotes long-term community investment. Some of the challenges we have been faced with are high turnover rates. In 2024 calendar year, our turnover rate was greater than 20%. High turnover leads to loss of institutional knowledge, and inexperienced employees may make costly mistakes. It leads to lower morale amongst the remaining staff, and replacing staff is costly and time-consuming. We did an analysis on the Police Department vacancies, and the cost for a new hire for Police Department is over $180,000. So as you can see, high turnover is very costly. The intangible costs associated with turnover are increased burnout, disruption of services and workflows, and failure to meet the community needs. The Home Buying Assistance Program would be a loan of $25,000 to assist with the purchase of a home in city limits. The city would be listed on the deed of trust. Forgiveness begins after five years after loan initiation. After 10 years, the loan is fully forgiven and the lien is released. This, this program creates a long-term commitment to live and work in Galt, further incentivizing retention. To be eligible, you have to be a full-time City of Galt employee who has successfully passed probation. It's a one-time option to participate in the program. You have to be in contract to purchase real property as principal residence within city limits, occupy the property as primary residence, obtain city preapproval with a list of conditions prior to purchasing the property, and you must be in contract to purchase the home within 90 days of application, or the funds are released to the next applicant. The property must be a single-family attached or detached dwelling or condo unit, and you must execute all documents required. So upon termination, or if eligibility is not maintained, the remaining balance of the loan term is due within 90 days. A committee has been established to oversee the program, review applications, ensure compliance, and adhere to repayment if eligibility is not maintained. So for this program, we are asking for authority of undesignated funds in the amount of $250,000. Does the council have any questions?
I have questions, but I'm going to let council go first. Anybody want to go first?
Just one question for the public's information. The committee, how does that work?
So the committee has been established. It includes myself, Assistant City Manager Ms. Mendez, and Police Chief Brian Kalanowski. So we'll meet after the initial application is received to review the documents, make sure everything's there, and ensure compliance to the program, make sure that eligibility is maintained.
Thank you.
So explain the committee again. You guys are the ones that review the applicants?
Yes.
And there's four, four people?
Three of us.
Three.
Well, and Frank. Frank will be on the committee.
So I know. So I know that we had discussed this. This was, this was a brainchild of when we were negotiating with police, and we decided not to use it. So my question is, this is available to all city employees, so it is available to Police Department as well? All of everybody?
To clarify, it's for, available for full-time employees.
Full-time employees, right. Okay, exactly. Right. My other question is, and I think you had it up on the slide, but I guess I didn't see it in the staff report. So if the employee quits, then the amount is due within 90 days. So even if they quit and they work somewhere else, but they still don't move, and they don't sell their home, I know we have a second deed of trust against the House, but if they don't sell it, but they would be, they would be obligated to.
Exactly.
Okay, so, so what if they, what if they just don't pay it then? I mean, obviously, we have, the house is the collateral, right? But if they don't sell it, and they don't say they don't have the money, then we just have to pursue, like, legal means that way? Which would be what, lien the house? Which we already have a lien. I mean, I'm just, I'm being honest here. Like, if you go after somebody for money, usually you end up getting a judgment. It results in a lien, which we would already have. So then, what, all we would really be doing would be tacking on legal fees on top of what they already owe us, right?
Well, Mayor, if I may, if I recall on the presentation, part of the program is to lien the property for, you know, the loan amount of $25,000. So if it is not paid, the lien just remains. So they would not be able to sell, refinance, or do anything with the property until then that loan was repaid.
Right. No, I understand that. And just, go ahead.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna state that we're going to encumber, there's something that is going to pull up in the title report from the day that deed of trust is taken against the property. So it will remain on the property until it's paid off. Once it's paid off, we will get, we will do a release of lien as the city. Otherwise, unless the city wants to initiate some kind of civil proceeding, it's going to have to wait until the lien gets paid off through change of hands or that type of thing.
Right. I mean, I'm only giving a hypothetical. If someone works, you know, six years, there's some balance left. They get a great offer for another city. They leave. They go work for a city Lodi. But they, but they stay living in Galt, and they keep their house for 20 years. I mean, I'm just, that's a, that's a very real hypothetical. So I'm just wondering, you know, how are we supposed to collect that money? Because we're just going to wait 30 years for it, or? Well, actually, and, and, and secondary question would be that obviously every year they stay with the city, then that money comes off. But, but basically, if, once they quit, it's frozen there, so that, that remaining balance stays fixed. So if they, if they lived here for 20 years, that stayed, that same amount remains, right? We're no longer taking anything off, obviously, right? Does that make sense?
We can do a partial release of lien at any time. So in a situation where someone leaves after six years, and that's $2,500 a year, so they've got.
So it's a forgiveness of $3,000 per year. So it doesn't begin until year five. So if they stayed here six years, only $6,000 would be forgiven of the full $25,000.
Okay.
I think I see your point, as if, okay, say the total liens on it, and we have $25,000 lien against the property, but doesn't get repaid for 20 years. The value of that $25,000 is much different in 20 years than it is now.
Exactly. And I mean, and honestly, like, somebody could get the program, and then maybe only be here like a year, and then leave, but they keep their house for another 20 years. And they're going to go, I don't want to pay back the, you know, I still owe 20 grand, for example. They're like, I'd rather, I know I'll have to pay it some back someday when I sell the house, obviously, but as long as they keep the house and the ownership, then that's the catch. So I just, I'm only concerned with that a little bit. Some other questions I have is, and I expressed these when we first talked about this program, is do we have like an amortization chart that you can pull up or some, or like an amortization, but it like is showing how many years? So it's a 10-year period, right?
Correct.
And, and the payback starts after?
After year five. So years five through nine is $3,000 per year. And then at year 10, the largest sum of $10,000 will be forgiven.
Okay. Which is way, is this how we structured it when I first?
On the backend.
We unloaded it, okay. Because I know there was concern that if you, because we originally, the program was designed where a little bit would start coming off all the way to the 10 years. And I was afraid that you take off, and you get to year five, and you're like, eh, only owe like five or six grand. It's not enough hook to keep them here, right?
Yes, exactly. That's why the forgiveness doesn't start till after year five.
How, how are applicants selected, like in order? Let's say that this is something that a bunch of employees are interested in. You get flooded with applicants. Is it like a first-come, first-served?
It would be first-come, first-served.
Because only 10 people are going to be able to apply, right?
Yeah, so that's why we added the provision that you need to be in contract to purchase a home within 90 days, or the funds will be released to the next applicant.
Okay. And then my second, maybe not second, but additional question is, I have some concern with the probationary period. I know that, what is the standard probation period right now?
It's one year for non-sworn, and then for sworn members, it's 18 months. You have to be past probation to be eligible to even apply.
So outside of the Police Department, for say, a Public Works employee, how probation is how long?
One year.
One year. I mean, I guess it's not a short time. I just, I, I just, I really like the idea of rewarding someone with eligibility who has proven they're going to be a loyal employee for a certain amount of time before this would be available to them. And for me, I'm not like, I don't know, I mean, a year, I'm not going to die on that hill. But to me, I feel like, I would like it to be longer, but I don't know. It's just me thinking out loud. I'd like to hear what you guys think about. So you guys have any questions? Any thoughts?
I don't have any question, but this program is a good program. And I would ask Ms. Koby, the reason we do this program because of high turnover.
Yes, that's correct.
Because our city cannot pay our employees compared to the other city because of the budget. So we want to retain our employee, right? That's why the reason we have this program.
Correct, yeah. We're trying to do something different, something unique to Galt that just further incentivizes retaining staff and rewarding them for being here for a long time.
So when anybody quit or anybody going in the city to another city, we lose a lot of money and a lot of operational disturbance. You know, I, I will support the program, but also I like to clarification of, as same thing Mayor said, I'm very welcome if that $25,000 going into default, for example, is basically, it's very hard to get that money back. As we know, a couple of meetings before, $250,000, and we decide we're not going to go to this pellet company because it's costly. So I know there might be, we don't have any other resource, but I like to, if there is any reason if, if that person going to in a default, we have to have used whatever we can do to get that money back. The other clarification is that house will be a principal residence, right?
That is correct, yes. They have to.
So hypothetically, if somebody already have a house, and that person said, I'm going to buy my principal house, is that employee can do it? Because if he can sold that house and buy the principal house, so that's mean he's also eligible, right? Or he's not?
They can buy a secondary home. They have to occupy it as their primary residence.
So they can, they can move to the first auto, they can sell that first house, or they can. Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure it's clarified.
So I had a question. This might sound crazy, but is there any way legally that, going back to the concern about collecting the money if they default? Is there any way legally that we can charge interest on the balance if it's not paid in 90 days? So if somebody sits on their house for 20 more years, I would like our money to be making money. If their house increases in value over that 20 years, I would like our $25,000 to also increase value. Is there any way that, any verbiage could be done? Where maybe the, whatever interest rate is on the house, on the first mortgage, it also applies to the, to the balance that we have? Or something like that? I don't know. I'm not a mortgage person, so I have no idea, but I'm just throwing this out there because.
I, I can't think of a program like that, but the problem is if you make the program too complex, you may also chill the retention and recruitment efforts that you're describing. So that's something we could look at, certainly. I just can't think of a, I can't think of a concept right now.
All I'm saying is the 90 days, to me, that part right there where it says if you, you know, if you default, it's due within 90 days. I just don't think that has any, that has any weight to it, because, I just don't. I mean, I just don't think it does. If somebody owes five or 10 grand, maybe they'll come up with the money, but I just don't, if somebody's, if somebody's going to owe like 20 grand or more, I just don't, I just see them probably not.
So I, Mayor, if I may, like, the city did have a program where we loaned, when we had redevelopment, we had a rehab and loan program, where we loaned money to income-eligible property owners to make improvements to their homes in Galt. And what we would do is basically attach the loan to the house. And essentially, any defaults, we would get, you know, and I think what was mentioned before, you know, when they went to refinance the house or sell the house. So I think the property itself is a safeguard where the city would get its money. You know, the important thing that we talked about before is, are we earning interest? And that program did have an interest factor into it. So I think that is certainly something we could look into.
Because, because I look at it this way. This is taxpayer money, right? So what we're essentially doing is we're investing taxpayer money into Joe's, John Smith's house.
100%.
Or so-and-so Smith's house. So I want that investment to work for us. Now, if they're diligent, and they're stated employee, and they do everything, and they pay back, then that's great, because that's the goal of why we're doing that money. But if they don't, then for that particular person, then the system, the program has failed. And so it reverts back to, I want to see the taxpayer money work for the taxpayer.
100%.
So I personally would like to see something, even if it's fairly loose. I don't think it would deter people, because if you're looking at it and go, oh, we're going to pay back in 90 days. The only reason somebody would be upset about having that on there was be if they would be thinking about not paying it back in 90 days if they defaulted. So just don't, don't break that rule, and you won't be, you know. You know, again, I, again, I would just hate to see a value of a home go up over 20 years and the house that was now $500,000, and 20 years from now is worth a million dollars, and we're just sitting there, and we waited all that time for our measly 20 grand, you know, when, how much money would that, that 20 grand, how much money would that have made if that wasn't our other investments over that 20 years? That's just my thought on it. I would like to hear public comment, though, if we, go ahead, but.
I would just like to say, I do support it. I like the idea. I like to, you know, hopefully, this is one of many programs that we have. But I absolutely agree. I think there's got to be some teeth there. I know, I know, yeah, if they sell the house, they have to pay us off. But if they don't sell the house, they don't have to, unless, you know, there, there is no motivation for it.
I mean, it's.
So I agree. I don't think it would stop them from doing it, just adding something to there.
I mean, I look at it like this way. If I, you know, if I went to, you know, you know, if I went to, you know, a friend and they said, hey, I'm trying to buy a house, you know, would you loan me some money to put a down payment? Sure, I'll loan you some money and I'll give you a great interest rate or whatever, right? But if I say, but if you, you know, take care of the house or whatever, we'll forgive, you know, the thing of it is, I just don't think anybody can go out and get money from anywhere without some kind of interest rate. Here, we're actually offering to loan people money at no interest rate and forgive the entire loan, which is awesome, and I like the idea behind it. But if it doesn't go well for us, I want some kind of safety net for the taxpayer.
And maybe I need some feedback from the city attorney and others, that we have that language that if they are terminated or the eligibility is not maintained, we want our loan back within 90 days. If not, within 90 days, we then put some language in that we then hit interest rate on any unpaid loan. So I don't know if it's as simple as inserting some loan rate information in that first bullet item on the program.
You know, same thing like in a mortgage, when it's good, go to the bankrupt and they usually include their interest rate and then they make, this is the balance. So if there is possible, I think that's why accounts wants to include, right?
Yeah, and maybe, and maybe it's, and maybe, maybe, I mean, I would be willing to consider a rate that's not like equal to what a mortgage rate would be, because to be honest with you, we're not gonna get, let's say a mortgage today is 7%. I mean, I think it's come down a little bit recently, but whatever, let's say it's 7%. Well, if we didn't loan this money out, we're not gonna make 7% on that 25 grand, but we'd be able to make 2% or 3%, so I think we should make something. I think we should be equal to what we could have gotten the fair market, some kind of locked-in number or something. The only other thing I would mention too, and Frank, this would be a legal question, I know I'm thinking of hypotheticals here, but I also would be concerned that if we terminated an employee, that would there be any chance of legal recourse where they come back and go, oh, you guys just terminated me in order to collect my money with?
Yeah, I mean, anytime you miss, anytime you mix any kind of city program, whether it's this or anything, there's all sorts of claims the city could face. I don't think that really changes the calculus in terms of what we should do for the reasons why Trish is stating. I'm sure someone could say that, but they'd have to be able to prove causation. I think that'd be very difficult to show. I can just tell you, whenever we work on any personnel matters, we are very thoughtful and we make sure we have a really good grounds to take whatever actions necessary. That being said, it's not uncommon to see interest, so right now, in our loan agreement, we have various mechanisms for what we do in case of default, and that's what we're talking about here, is a version of default if the borrower defaults. One is automatic payment. The other one, we have the ability to take them to collections, do other kinds of things to try to get the money. But we could add, we don't have it now, but we could add an interest and/or penalty provision. I wouldn't tie it to the Fed rate or any other kind of mortgage rate out there. I would just come up with our own interest and penalty provision.
I mean, I don't want to kill the program. I don't want to deter people, but I don't, I don't think, I think if somebody genuinely responsible person comes into this, and they are someone who's, you know, has integrity that pays back their bills and pays their mortgage on time and all those things, right, and wants to do this, I think something like that in there is not going to scare them from doing it. Why would they, why would they be scared? The only person that would be scared away would be somebody who is thinking in the back of their mind how they could work the system and not pay the money back. That's just my thought. Do you have any public comment on this?
Sorry, good. That's all right. I don't disagree with what some of you guys are saying, but I'm gonna take a different spin on it, right? We're looking at investing in our employees so that they will stay here. Do we want to try to get our money back? Yes. Do we, but do we want to make this program that much more difficult on our, our staff, or the people that are taking advantage of the, the program? No, we don't, right? And I know $250,000 sometimes is a lot of money, right? But we've spent, as the city, that much money on consultants before, and this contract and that contract, and not all the time do those play out, right? This is the same type of scenario, right? It's, $250,000 is a lot, but it's not a lot if we're investing in our employees. So if for some reason we do have the 10, and it's only 10, so the chance, so the percentage of that one of these things might happen is probably relatively low. But I don't want to make it that much more difficult where, because we've already offered it to certain areas of the city and they didn't want to take advantage of it, so now we're offering it to everyone else. And so I just don't want us to, to nickel and dime this so much so that it doesn't do what we want it to do. We want to put that money out there so that our staff have a reason to stay here and live within the city here. And so that's just my two cents on it.
Do you have a public comment?
Chris Brosman.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. In regards to the home buying assistance program, you guys know me, I'm pretty cheap. But I'll also tell you, I'm actually for it. I'd like to compliment HR for coming up with it. I think it's a good program. I think we need to do something out there. I did have a few questions, though. Some of them were already asked, but first, to me, why the first come, first serve? I think we look at our high turnover departments and we give them more opportunity to earn it. I'd like to give it to department heads and go, hey, who's your key people? Use this as your keeping them or retaining tool with them versus making it first come, first served. To me, first come, first served. I may get a guy that has a year with us in Parks and Rec. He's a landscaper. I don't want to necessarily loan him 25K, to be honest with you, because he's the guy that might quit in a year or two with me. But my key employees are who we're looking to keep. And to me, opening it to everybody I know makes legality a lot easier, but to me, it's a retaining tool. And it should be used as a retaining tool, and we can minimize our potential bad debt. I actually agree with Tim. I mean, to me, you water it down when you start diluting it, but choosing the right people too is key. You go to a bank and you get a loan, what's the first thing they do? They look at your credit score. So we should be looking at our supervisors and going, hey, our department heads and going, hey, what's the chances that we put this program together for them? And in my mind, after five years, you've earned $10,000 of that back. After 10 years, you've earned the additional $15,000 back. I'm not a onesie-twosie kind of guy. I'd rather put a longer term, because they've already got one-year commitment with us, so really at five years, they've got six years with the company, or the city. After 10 years, the chances of losing them are less, unless it is that someone comes poaching them with bigger money. Also, one of the things I'd keep in mind, Sean, is average person sells a house a little short of seven years. So having a lien on the property is a pretty good hook, or people want to refinance it. I mean, I know that's not necessarily true with all of us sitting here, but that is the average that is out there on refinancing or moving. Really, I'd like to recommend it. $250,000 in my mind is small dollars. Like I said, I would like to see it more targeted to specific employees, key employees, people that we want to retain versus opening up to everybody, because I don't need a landscaper. I can find landscapers generally. What I'd like to see it used especially on is dispatchers for PD, because that seems to be a role that's constantly changing, and I don't know that it would make a difference. I mean, chief can speak to that, but I don't even know that 25 is the right dollar amount. Maybe it needs to be 50 with PD, but I'd like to see us keep our dispatchers a longer period of time. It seems like we're always looking for them. Thank you again very much for giving me the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman.
Phyllis Johnson.
Thank you for the time. My problem is, number one, the key word probation. I totally disagree with it, and I'll explain why. As the gentleman just brought out, for instance, let's say we have a person who has lived in Lodi or in Elk Grove, and they proved themselves, they've been, they've been commuting here and working over three, four years. So obviously, they're responsible to Galt. They decide they want to move here, they want to buy a house. We should be helping people like that. We already have an establishment of a permanent one right here that we should be dealing with. I agree, bringing in new help is important, but not as important as somebody that's already established, ready to go, let's help that person get a house here in Galt. That's the difference of the two. And another thing, not everybody is on probation. So in my mind, you're putting this up to a higher class of employment than others that may not go through a probationary period. They may be there a year, six months, whatever, and they've gone from maybe temporary to permanent employee or whatever, their title has changed, but it wasn't a probationary thing. I therefore would like to see the word probation stricken. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Becky Rowensby.
Good evening. I was watching it and had to come in, so I'm not really prepared that well, so thanks for listening. I just had a couple of things to say about an underwriting perspective, coming from a lending background. So my questions are, the equity in the home, let's say they're buying a brand-new home and they're putting maybe 5% down, and then we slap this loan on top of that, and so it's negative equity, right? So I would just want to know what the underwriting is going to look like with that. Let's say that, you know, they do a USDA loan, which is 100% down, they don't have to put anything down, then you slap the $25,000 on top of that. You know, the likelihood of if something goes bad, is that going to be able to get paid back? The only way you can get that note paid off prior to refinancing or selling is if you wanted to do a foreclosure, which then they'd have to pay off the first, right? Which is going to be massive, so you're not going to do that. So that $25,000 will just sit there. Sorry, I didn't bring my glasses, I can't even see. So I just want to know a little bit more about the underwriting of that. And what's the first? Is there going to be any stipulations on that first mortgage? You know, maybe they wouldn't put it behind a 100% financing, and 100% financing is also a VA loan, so would they have a problem with that, which, you know, we don't want that, but that is a thing. Also, a tax service. So if they don't pay their taxes and the taxes go delinquent, are we going to be notified of that? You know, do we want to watch that tax service so that it doesn't get foreclosed and that just goes away? That's the kind of stuff that I look at. So there has to be a little bit of underwriting to this. You know, I think the program is fine, but it needs to be underwritten, I think, meaning there needs to be some guidelines that, think about all that stuff. Hopefully that makes sense. That's about it. I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Becky, for your insight.
Dan DeNeer.
Mayor, members of council, I'm sitting back here listening to this discussion, and I just had a couple of questions I wanted to ask. Is this program in any other local jurisdiction? I know there's can't be back and forth, but I'm gonna ask the council. Is there any local jurisdictions that have a similar program to this? And are we, you know, mirroring that program and trying to institute here? And then also, will this also, are we planning on funding this on a yearly basis, or is this a one-time funding and a one-time only deal? I do think that this is, as Mr. Brosman mentioned, it's a good investment in your employees, but it also makes business sense to me, because as the HR director mentioned, it costs $180,000 a year to replace a police officer. And so you're talking about an extra $70,000 here. So if, even if you use the program for five police officers, you know, you're saving, the cost on that is $900,000. So your return on the investment, I think is something that you have to keep in mind and take into account as well. But really, I think you just, like, again, take a look at those numbers. I know it doesn't cost maybe $180,000 to replace other employees, but there is still a cost to them as well. And I guarantee you, that cost is probably over $25,000 by the time you advertise and go through the hiring process and all of that. So again, it's a matter of making good business sense and getting a good return on your investment overall, when you look at the total numbers. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Ken Lee.
Good evening, counsel. I just wanted to add some other factors. You know, if they already leave on the house, can you tie it to an equity loan? Because most likely, the house does go up and so does the loan limits. How does divorce come into this play? And how does death of that employee, what happens to the family? And what happens when they have a long-term sickness? Their family needs to be protected too, or, you know, that's unforeseen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
No more comment.
So Ms. Kobe, just to answer a couple concerns that have been brought up by the public. One is, we don't, we're not really mirroring this off of another agency. This is kind of, we're kind of the tip of the spear on this, right?
That's correct. It is unique to Galt. There are two other agencies I'm aware of that are doing a program similar. So the city of Ripon, they have terminated their program, and then the city of Lathrop does $10,000.
Do you know why Ripon terminated theirs? I know you mentioned that before, now that I'm thinking about it.
I assume funding. And theirs was required to be paid back.
And then the other question was, I'm assuming we're proposing this as like a one-time, so would this be something that would come back to council next year and we decide if we're gonna continue the program for another year? It's just like, what, in the resolution we have here, is there a term limit on this program?
We are only asking for one-time funds of $250,000. We want to assess the success of the program first before coming back and asking...
So no time limit, but there's just a fixed amount, so if it takes long, okay. All right. I mean, I get what, I thought about what Tim was saying, and I get, and I know it was echoed by Mr. Brosman and Mr. DeNeer, that you are investing in your employees. And then, so I was just simply trying to look out for taxpayer money, because I, I don't want, I just, we get, a lot of times we get accused of just loosely spending taxpayer money, and so I just wanted to make sure that we were protecting the money. But I do get that it is an investment, it's just looking at it a different way. But I also thought about what Mr. Brosman said. Now, I don't really know, I think it would get a little bit convoluted if we were trying to say like, you know, well, my department, you know, has higher turnover, that's, you know, I think my guys deserve it more, and then we get into back and forth between departments on who should be able to get it first. I don't know that that would even work. But I do think that, I agree somewhat with, I mean, I don't agree with the statement that, you know, landscaper's not as important, but I understand that like a landscaping position or whatever, a lower-level position, we'll call it, could be something that's not as difficult to fill as a higher position. So if we're looking for a retention standpoint, trying to retain key roles and key positions that are more difficult to keep retention, I can totally get that and why we want to focus that. So with that, I probably would be willing to give up on the, I won't dig my heels in on the, on the interest rate thing, on the interest on the uncollected. I would, I mean, I would go along with what the council wants to do. If they don't want to do that, that's fine. But I think in light of what was said by the public, I think we should look at a longer period than just probation. I think we should maybe look at a couple of years. I think we should look at a longer timeframe, proving that employee is more loyal to Galt than just one year. One year is such a short timeframe. And I also think, I don't know how we could do this, but maybe we can do it as a seniority basis too, because I would hate for a person who's got seven or eight years in... basis too, because I would hate for a person who's got seven or eight years in, doesn't get an opportunity at the program when we have a couple of people that have only been here one year. So I don't know how we would do that, but I don't know. I'm just throwing, I'm just spitballing here. I don't know, anybody have any ideas?
I'll comment. Yeah, as far as the landscaper thing goes, well, sometimes, you know, a landscaper may become a director. You know, that happens. So I have no problem with that. I still do support some sort of, just a flat interest rate if they default, starting the day, the end of the 90 days, they don't pay it back. Simple verbiage, it just says 2%, 4%. You know, like you said, it doesn't have to be a lot, but it keeps them from letting it sit there and build up, or not build up. It will sit there. If there's something there, they'll, they'll probably address it. But I support the program.
No, same thing. I will support the program is right now, whatever, but just make the comment, these things, the mayor talking about, the interest and penalty only abuse the system. Everybody, that system, I agree with whatever, but he's just telling, if somebody abused the system, that's why interest and penalty. It's not with everybody. I do understand what Tim said, and I'm agree with that, but if we put some kind of things in anybody, person, anywhere, if abused the system, it should be some kind of penalized. That's my question, but I'm supportive. If everybody agree with that one, I will, okay, but if somebody would like to write down a little bit of verbiage with interest and penalty if somebody go to default.
Ms. Kobe, do you have any, I know that you're probably not, you know, a mortgage person, like maybe Ms. Rowensby is or something, but I think she did both good questions, and I don't even, couldn't even, to begin to answer those questions, because I don't know anything about underwriting and stuff. Do you have any thoughts or anything on what her concerns were with the underwriting and different loans and stuff? How would we, I mean?
Yeah, we do have a very thorough application process. We're going to be working with both the lender and the title company. We're going to be doing a credit check in addition to all the required documents, the same as what is needed for a regular loan. So two years' worth of W2s, tax returns, even though we have that information, we'll also need it for the co-buyers or any other income that may be applicable.
And I may also, I think, she also mentioned, in terms of the stipulations in the loan, when it's, when you're eligible, it's eligible, you're eligible for the loan provided your first loan and/or home equity line of credit does not exceed 80% of loan-to-value total. So you're eligible to come in, and we would subordinate this loan behind that. But, so if, and, you know, if you can get 100% loan from VA, for example, then you wouldn't be able to get this loan, because the city needs some protection of equity if they're going to do this. So we've, kind of the standard convention for most traditional mortgages, 80%, so that's where this is at. You can come behind that, but we don't want to see a primary that's over 80% or any combination with any other loan. So just want to clarify that as well.
Right, that makes sense. So I would just like to float an idea to council here, and we can talk about it some more if we need to. How about we do? I don't know. You have, you guys have any thoughts on the probation thing? And I brought it up, and nobody really answered. I mean, are you guys all pretty comfortable with the, just the one-year probation, or would you like to see a longer?
I'm comfortable with the way she's got it written.
Yep.
So.
But another thing about the probation, so that's mean, the law enforcement, they can be, have more probation than the other, so this cannot be a fair, right?
Yes, that's correct. May I make a statement on that topic?
Sure.
So when we started talking about this, the key time for where we start losing staff is once they get their 18 months in and get their basic post certificate, and that makes them a free agent across the state of California for law enforcement agencies who may pay more, or whatever they may be looking for. So I understand the comment, but we want to, I don't know, handcuff be the right term, but we want to encourage folks to stay right out of the gate, so at year two or two and a half, they're not gone, because the investment that's made early on is significant. And the second thing I want to clarify is, every person we turn over, that costs us $180,000 based on the work that we did a couple of years ago. And I think you guys saw in close session. So that's, you know, that thing just compounds itself, and we chase it, you know, in perpetuity. So the idea is to slow the flow early, and this is just related to PD, I can't speak to other departments. And so I think that was why Ms. Kobe proposed what she did.
Chief, let me ask you this. The probationary period for PD is what?
18 months for sworn, one year for the non-sworn.
So, in your opinion, do you feel like there would be some issue with PD saying, "Well, we have to go 18 months," whereas everybody else only has to go one year for their probationary period?
No, I think that's fine, because they can't get their basic post certificate until they're done with our probation. I think changing the probation period is a whole different conversation with HR, unrelated to this program. So they don't have their basic post until 18 months. It's different, the credentialing standard is different for other-than-sworn officers.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it fair, that's all. I'm just, I'm just asking that, just to.
And this probation thing's been the rule of the land forever, so, or not forever, but for many, many years. So that's not being changed in this program, it's what currently exists.
Right, and probation, and correct me if I'm wrong, that probation doesn't have to do with just new full-time staff. If a staff goes from part-time to full-time, or from temporary to full-time, or any of these other statuses to full-time, then they are back on probation, even if they were when they were part-time or whatever that other status is, right?
Correct. Once they become a full-time classified employee, they reserve a one-year probation.
And probation is pretty much standard wherever you go.
That's correct.
I've been on probation, I don't even know how many times. So, not his type of probation, work probation.
All right, so, this is what I would, this is what I would suggest to council, see if there's, if there's any interest, or you guys could weigh in. I would like to suggest that we keep the probation period, period for whatever it is for PD, whatever it is for, you know, there's a difference there, but that's fine. With two, with two, with two changes, though. One is that we do tie an interest rate to it. I think, I was just doing some research here, and I think something that would be fair would be that you tie it to the market rate at the time of default. So whatever the default, whatever the market rate is, that's what we attach to it. I know it might be higher than what we get in the savings account, but I think it's, it's just, I think it would just be an easy thing to do. And then, second of all, I would like to have something where staff could come back to us and say, three or four months, and update us. I mean, it doesn't have to be a form, it could just be a, just a random, just a loose update within staff comments. You could say, you know, "Council just want to let you know, we've had three applicants for," I just kind of want to know how it's going. Because if it's not going well, I would like the item to come back to us for further tweaking.
Okay.
Because if it's not, if nobody's taking interest, and we just, "Well, we need to tune it up and do something different." So people, what's wrong with it? Why aren't people taking it? I would like to know that, and before, it's like six months from now or something. So I don't know how you guys feel about the rate tied to thing? That actually was something I looked up, I just looked up kind of something similar and whatever, and that's what a suggestion that came up. I don't know if that would be complicated legally?
No, I mean, I think, I don't know that the agreement, the loan agreement currently doesn't allow us to do, the way it works is, if you don't pay within 90 days, we enter into an amended agreement at that point with the borrower to basically require repayment, and we, it doesn't, it doesn't prohibit us from adding any other sticks to that agreement, such as penalty and interest. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, the way it will work is, we can, we can modify these documents to do that, but the amended agreement that, that's currently contemplated, if you want sort of a live, in real time, what the market's doing, that's the best way to do that, because we'll be preparing a new amended document for them at that point anyways.
Because I mean, again, I wasn't, it was something I was willing to go along with, but it seems to me that Mr. Pratt and Mr. Sandu are both interested in having some kind of, something tied to it. So in which case, I'm kind of going to go back on board with that and say that I agree with that as well. So is that, is that my understanding correctly?
That's great.
Yeah. So I'm open-minded to whatever. I think we just need to have some kind of penalty and interest attached. Maybe you guys could come back with something? So, I mean, I don't want to belabor this program, but would that be something?
I don't think we have to come back. Like I said, the current program contemplates at the time of default, they will enter into a new amended agreement that will require repayment and, and whatever else we decide to do in terms of potential sticks to incentivize it. We can include penalty and interest at that time, whenever that happens, because we want that penalty and interest amount to be market-based at that point, so we don't know what that is.
How do we determine what that number is? The council, the staff just decides that?
It'll have to be the Home Loan Committee. And the Home Loan Committee, I mean, at that point, we're, you know, we are administering the program, it's strictly an administrative act. We can put in this agreement, in this program, the amended agreement shall include some kind of market rate, interest, and penalty provision, if that's what the council wants us to do.
I would like to see something like that. Because I just don't want to lose up discretion and find out the committee said, "Well, we decided to just penalize them like a flat $500 or something weird," and we're like, "No, no, that's not what we," you know what I'm saying?
Well, what I'm saying is, if you want it to be market-based at the time, you're going to have to leave, give the committee discretion, because I don't think we want to be taking all of these to council for approval. I don't think that's what the council, or it would just be inefficient. So you can put in the agreement, there is, there is this agreement that's going to be entered in the event of default, and we can just make clear in that document, as well in this agreement, that there will be a market rate, interest, and penalty given at the discretion of the Home Loan Committee. We, or we could put the amount now, but if we want it to be market-based, there's no way we can predict what that would be now.
What do you, I want to get this over the goal line, what do you think? So it's fine, just so we put in there that's market rate at the discretion of the, okay. Are you okay with that, Tim? I know you weren't for it, but, but, yeah. Is that clear as mud?
Yes, absolutely. I have directed my need, thank you.
All right, so we're not going to mess with the probation period, we're not going to mess with the amount, we're not going to, it's still going to be a first. Now, let, just, I want to revisit this real quick, though, because I just want to make sure we get this right. First come, first served, like, how does that, like, I mean, I doubt that it'll happen, but I'd hate to hear that there was like 12 people, like, calling you up tomorrow morning wanting to know if they can get their name on a list or something.
Well, they have to have pre-approval from their lender already, so it can't happen overnight.
Got you, okay.
And then they have to gather all their documents, so it's upon receipt of a completed application packet.
Okay.
I mean, and I'm looking up, I mean, I think ours is a little tighter than a couple of other ones that I found, you know, that this one's by lottery, and then if they default, because they no longer work for that organization now, they have five years to pay back the loan. And so I think ours is a little bit tighter and a little bit more streamlined than apparently some other jurisdictions.
Well, again, and just for the public who made comments, I appreciate all your comments. You guys had great questions, and we're not claiming to be, you know, mortgage experts or anything up here. This is, this is, again, this is the first time thing we're doing this. But I would rather start off on the more conservative approach, and then find out that none of our employees are like, "Oh, it's way too complicated," and then you come back and go, "Nobody wants to do the program." Then we can always tweak it, and we can loosen it up or change it then, but we can't go the other way, right? So I'd rather start up, start conservative and go the other way. That's just my thought. So with that, I would be looking for a motion to approve. The program is presented with the exception of the market rate penalty at the discretion of the, the Approval Committee, or whatever we're calling the committee.
I will move to approve as suggested.
Second.
And did you still want the staff to come back?
Yeah, update.
Yes, please, with a staff update, yes.
With the updates.
With updates, right.
All right, well, we have a motion by Councilmember Pratt in a second, by Councilmember Reed, so if I can have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. All right, approved 4 to 0. Thank you for all the comments from the public, I appreciate that. Communication, do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. City Clerk's report, item J, J1, League of Cities City Conference Designation of Voting Delegate. Ms. Hubert.
Okay, so this is our annual League of California Cities designation of voting delegate, and the recommendation is to appoint a city council member, voting delegate, and up to two alternates if desired, at the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo, October 8th through 10th of this year in Long Beach, California. In order to vote at the annual business meeting, city council must designate one voting member. You also have the option to appoint up to two alternate voting delegates, one of whom may vote in the event that the designated voting delegate is unable to serve. The cost for the member to attend all three days is $725, plus lodging and flight, add an additional, approximate additional $1,000 to $1,200, so almost $19,000 to $2,000. And the cost to attend the Friday conference only, where you'll be voting, is $375, plus flight. So you can only, you have the option to vote one council member to attend, up to two alternates, or not appoint anybody.
Anybody interested? It's October 8th, 9th, and 10th.
This is three-day, or you can just go?
8th through 10th, or you can just go on Friday?
If you go just only one day, is okay?
On Friday, yes. Which is when you'll vote.
So somebody could go just on the 9th? Or is it the 8th?
10th.
On the 10th, okay.
If nobody interested, I will go on, but if somebody interested.
No, I'm available, but if you want to go, go. You have more experience, so I think you should go.
So then he can go too with the alternate, right? They need, they need to go to alternate, yeah.
So you just have to decide who you want as the main voting member? And then the other one would be in case something happened, you got sick or whatever?
Well, let me throw this out there. I think, if we have the discretion to send one or two people, I like the idea, if you're available, that you both go. And the reason is, is because, and I know, you know, we don't know what you're doing next year, but we know for sure that your term's going to continue, but I think it's important that we have somebody who's going to be, you know, like, not me, I would, I wouldn't volunteer, because I'm, you know, I don't think it's right for me, I'm only here for one more year. I think it's, some of the longer members should go, like you, Tim, or Will Bonney's right. So I like the fact that Matt would go as an, as an alternate. So he would go, but only as an alternate, how would that work?
Well, you have to designate which one's going to be your main voting member first.
Okay, okay.
So we have decide today, or?
Yes.
So the main one, you have to go there one day, is okay?
Yeah, one day's fine.
I'd like to do all three, to get as much information as I can.
So let's, I will, I will do the alternate.
Okay.
Vice Mayor's alternate.
So you'll be an alternate, if something happens and he can't go, then you'll go? So just so we're going to send Matt, unless something happens and he can't go? Okay. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then I, I would like to, I will make a motion that we send Councilmember Pratton as a primary with Vice Mayor Sandu as the alternate, should something happen and Mr. Pratton is unable to attend. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Reed, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. 4 to 0. She should have said that. All right, moving on to comments by staff. Arayaus?
Public Works Director, John Griffin. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I want to give a quick update on some of the fun things happening at Public Works. Sorry, engineer humor there. Annually, Public Works utilizes goats for cleaning of our drainage channels and removing vegetation. So we will have two herds of goats arriving tomorrow. One will be on the east side of town, one will be on the west side of town, and they'll be out here for about two weeks, clearing the channels. And while we encourage our citizens to observe the goats and watch them in action, as a reminder, the fences are electrified, and we also recommend that they do not, you know, that parents watch their children closely, and do not allow them to approach or engage the working dogs or goats that are on site. and do not allow them to approach or engage their working dogs or goats that are on sight.
All right, thank you, sir.
Parks and Rec Director, Armando Salis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, for the record, I think landscapers are really important. I just wanted to, uh, remind you guys of some, uh, events that are coming up. Uh, this Saturday will be the Saturday Market on September sixth. On the thirteenth, we will have our, uh, Movies in the Park, uh, Lilo and Stitch at Veterans Field, and then the Farm to Fork Event will be on the, that Saturday. So, so.
And then finally, I think you've all had the opportunity to meet, uh, new Finance Director, Lila Menor, but this is her first, uh, uh, regular council meeting, and so welcome, Lila. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Arias. Comments by councilmembers, future agenda items, Mr. Pratton will start off with you.
Yeah, no comments tonight.
Chief is smiling right now, he must be close to the time.
For the record, for the record, I picked six fifty-one. I missed it by a mile.
All right, very quick, thank you for the staff, for their hard working, thank you for the public comment, and thank you for the media. And I also welcome and congratulations to Lila. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Reed?
I'll start off, uh, thanking everybody sitting at the table. Uh, you guys work a lot harder than I do, um, here, so, thank you. Uh, the harder you guys work, the easier it makes our job, so, thanks for that. Uh, the next thing is, uh, possible future agenda item, I know I've, uh, talked to some people about it. And, I mean, we had public comment today about a lot of, uh, issues that are plaguing our senior community and certain senior establishments. And I know the city has done a lot of things that the city has tried to do, to try to correct these situations. And so I've sent an email to our city attorney and we're going to, um, at, what I'm asking for is for a future agenda item, for us to come back and possibly find a way to be a little more, um, to try to find a resolution for the, for the problem. I know Bonnie, who's not here, she's been a huge advocate for that. And I just think there's a another way that we can go about, uh, addressing this. I know that there's been a lot of times that the cities went out and they haven't found things, but we're still getting complaint after complaint after complaint about these facilities. And a lot of ti- a, a lot of them are things that can't be found, right? That can't, that can't happen in front of people that are observing. So I, I think that maybe either like us formulating some kind of communication from the council to these places, um.
So we would need to, to do a future agenda, we need something more specific, like we need to be like, it need to be like, you need to be like, maybe you could, just throwing something out, it could be like, we would like to maybe l- look at a proposed ordinance that could give us some more tools. You could, like there was talk about something like that, it could be something like that. Or it could be, but what you're saying is pretty vague, I, I get what you're saying. But I'm just saying, but for, the way it works is we have to be more specific, um, with that, so, um, what, what I, what I, I'm going to give you a different idea, Tim.
Yep.
What about if we, what about if we bring back an agenda item to discuss, I know it's going to sound very government-like right now. Let's bring an agenda item back to discuss forming an ad hoc committee with two council members and maybe a staff member to look at what could be done, like, maybe we look at an ordinance, maybe we look at something else. But just, it's almost like, you know, the mayor and I are part of the Quality of Life ad hoc. Something like that, I don't want to belabor the topic, but I'm just trying to come up with a, like a, a pathway to something. So we could agendize forming an ad hoc and what that would look like and what they would do, and in the meantime, between this time, when that comes back as an agenda item, maybe Frank or somebody else, city manager could say, these are some of the things we could possibly, that the ad hoc could look at, and they can maybe have an idea of what that ad hoc, ad hoc would even do. I don't know.
May I throw something out, in that same vein, I mean, you do have a Quality of Life Committee where items like that can be addressed. And maybe that's a place to start that discussion, as in the Quality of Life, uh, subcommittee.
No, that's thing, the same thing I want to say, we have a meeting time. And certainly, this issue is a quality of life.
Yeah.
And then this issue is a whole community. Both side is our community. So let's, uh, talk, we can bring that issue next meeting on discussion, then bring to the council.
Our meetings next week, I don't think that might be a little soon to tee up something though, or do you think? I know we just kind of loose discussion, do you? Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it next week, Wednesday we have a Quality of Life meeting, we'll discuss, and then we'll have the city manager report back to the rest of the council on any discussions that took place in there and what, and then we can see where it goes from there. I know you and Bonnie have been the biggest advocates publicly on this. So I know you're not part of the Quality of Life ad hoc, so that's the only caveat with that, but, and let's start there. And let's see how that conversation goes and see what we come up with, and then I'll have Chris report back to the rest of you guys on what, and then we can see where that goes. And if you're not happy with the, you know, that in a couple more meetings, and you want to like, give us something else.
And that'll give.
Yeah, and Bonnie's not here too, so, right.
Because I just know that, I mean, there's, there's only a certain amount of things that we being, you know, our avenues, right? Between the police department and the fire department and public works and public health can do. And, I mean, it, they've all been out there several times.
Yeah, and that's what we're going to.
And we're still getting the same complaints, time after time after time, almost every city council meeting. And so I just, I, there's got to be something else we can do, and that's what I wanted to get out of that, so let's start with the Quality of Life and then we'll go from there.
Right, and there's a lot of background there too, that, that we're aware of and that Frank's aware of, and we can, yeah, so. Okay. Did you have anything else, or is that it?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, I myself, I do appreciate that, thank you for bringing that up, because I was trying to figure out something myself, so. On another thing, not to complicate things, and this isn't a huge rush, but in light of a lot of conversations that have been happening in amongst many different, you know, school, city, you know, it's been in the public process. I would like to at some point, it's not urgent, Frank, but I think at some point, maybe by this winter. I mean, I just, like I said, if we, maybe we have a light agenda or something, I would like to tee up the conversation, a future agenda item about looking at matching up, updating our municipal code regarding e-bikes and, and all those kinds of vehicles. I feel like right now we're defaulting it to.
I was going to bring that to you in the Quality Life.
Oh, okay.
Because I passed along a sample ordinance that we're looking at.
Okay, all right, so we can talk, all right.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, well then, we'll see how that goes, and never mind, we'll, we'll find out, all right. Uh, well, with that, um, I'm not going to go into any, just thank you for public speakers, we appreciate all your input as usual. Thank you, staff. Welcome, Ms., how do you say your last name, I'm sorry? Menor, okay, I just didn't want to get it wrong. Well, welcome again, I know we've met. And, uh, Armando, you guys are doing a great job out there, just want to let you know. Park's looking great. Not to belittle anybody else's department, but I just want to, because he's, his feelings are hurt about the comment we made about landscapers tonight, so I want to make you feel better. So, all right, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at, uh,